Okay, just in a clock, go ahead and get started. Happy New Year to everyone. I wanna, wanna welcome Commissioner Precinct One, Commissioner Zamorano Alanis. Kelly Zamorano Alanis.
Yes, sir.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Notice hereby given, Willis County Commissioners Court will hold a regular meeting at the County Justice Office Commissioners Courtroom at 576 West Main Street in Ramville, Texas, 78580, on Thursday, January 9th of 2025 at 10:00 a.m. for the purpose of discussing the following items. If during the course of the meeting, in the discussion of any item, the agenda to be held in an executive or closed session, Willis County Commissioners Court will convene in such executive or closed session according with Section 551.01 of the Texas Government Code. Should any final action, final decision, or final vote be required in the opinion of the Willis County Commissioners Court in regard to any matter considered such closer executive meeting or session, then the final decision or final vote should be either in the open meeting covered by the notice upon the reconvening of the public meeting, or a subsequent meeting of the Willis County Commissioners Court on notice thereof, as the county shall determine. So with that, I'm calling this meeting to order. Madam Chief Deputy Clerk, could you establish a form, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Precinct One?
Present.
Commissioner Precinct Two?
Present.
Commissioner Precinct Three?
Present.
Commissioner Precinct Four?
Present.
Our local county judge?
Present.
We do have a call.
Thank you. Please stand for names.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Dear Lord, as we gather for this meeting, we seek your guidance and wisdom. May our discussions be filled with clarity and purpose. Help us to listen, speak with respect, and collaborate effectively for the betterment of Willis County. Amen.
Amen.
We'll go to line item number four, public comments. There's none, then we'll go to line item number five, approval of chains. So the audit to work in, working with it. Good review, approve to approve. I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia to approve the claim. All seconded. Second by Commissioner De La Paz. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Line item number six, approved previous minute as follows. December 12th, 2024, regular meeting. December 12th, 2024, regular meeting. December, uh, Addendum One, December 18th of 2024, public workshop. December 30th, 2024, public hearing. December 30th, 2024, uh, regular meeting. Action required. Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner Tejeraina. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Line item number seven, uh, presentation to acknowledge and recognize Elizabeth Barnhart for the, her years of service as a Willis County Tax Office Assessor and Collector. And with that, Commissioners, uh, I just wanna read real quickly. This is just to spread the minutes. I know she got recognition in the employee appreciation event that we had, uh, in late December. So, uh, the, the plaque that, that we, uh, that we gifted to her in recognition, uh, says, "To Elizabeth Barnhart, in honor of your dedication and 30 years of loyal service, a time to look back for admiration and a time to look forward with anticipation. Best wishes and congratulations on your retirement, uh, from, uh, Willis County Commissioners Court." So with that, uh, I, uh, I make the, uh, the acknowledgement of, uh, Ms. Barnhart, 30 years of good public service. Uh, I also just wanna briefly mention that, uh, should also be, uh, recognized in the next meeting of the, uh, Rio Grande Valley Development, uh, Council in West Laco later this month, uh, which, uh, uh, I am a, uh, a board member of the Executive Committee of that organization. A very well-acknowledged organization in the region. So then we'll go to line item number eight, informational purposes. Resignation of crime victims, liaison Laura I Montes accepted as of, uh, as of January 3rd of 2025, uh, will advertise for Willis County Sheriff's Office crime victim liaison position. I know the sheriff is here, and so what we're doing sheriff here is, uh, recognizing the resignation. Is that?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Sheriff, by chance, do we have any, do you have anybody already?
No, sir. We'll be advertising on our social media and the local papers as well, uh, for applicants.
Uh, was this position the one, uh, that was, I think we have, was she part correct?
Uh, yes, sir. It was funded, uh, 80% by the grant and 20% by, by, uh, by us.
You know, this, this is a position that the first year was 100%.
Yes, sir.
Went from 2020, and then we had a discussion as well that there is kind of like the, the same, but I get different with the, uh, uh, District Attorney's actions. We had that discussion. I, I think, uh, there has been, uh, a very good job done by, by both. And, and I see this, uh, and I've attended these events that they have for, for victims. And I think it's, uh, very well, uh, an essential program to.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
So I guess what we're asking to do here is to accept the resignation and to, uh, officially, um, approve the advertisement. Is that?
That's pretty much it, Captain.
I'm, I'm assuming in the interim, uh, the DA's office is gonna help pick up with, in case we have any services needed before you get it filled?
We can, absolutely. It's not an action item, though?
No.
To advertise, so it's, uh, they'll have to come back for that if, if there's a need for it. I don't, I audit it with. If there's a need to come back to approve, to advertise for it.
No, if they have, uh, funding, it is their budget, they can go ahead and advertise and take care of that. Uh, I did wanna ask, uh, Sheriff, because our payroll department hasn't, uh, received a resignation one from Laura or your department, and, uh, we're processing payroll as, as we speak, so this would be her last payroll. Um, and I just wanna make sure that, uh, she was able to use up all her leaves because she is grant-funded.
Yes, she, she, um, utilized a lot of her vacation hours and things like that. Um, we'll get that to you. My office will send that over to your line.
Yes, 'cause we're approving payroll today in the morning, so this would affect, um, her last paycheck. And, um, I hope then, like I said, if she's applying everything, then she should resign because grant-funded employees move on. Usually pay out in on-time or, or vacation hour.
So I guess what we can do is take no action, but allow you to move forward with the advertisement? Would that?
You just, you need to submit that, Judge. There, there's no need for action.
All right. Good with that, Sheriff?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Sheriff. Yes, sir.
Okay, we go to line item number nine, uh, Techstat to provide monthly updates.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Janet Avila, uh, project engineer at Techstat, Community Area Office. And I'm here to present, uh, project updates for two projects in Willis County. Uh, first project is FM, uh, FM 1425 from, uh, S H 186 to 490. Uh, we completed the northbound section of the rehab, and, uh, contractor is now working on the southbound. Contractor is foremost paving. We are currently at 50% complete. Uh, we are estimating, uh, for the contractor to complete the other section by late March. Uh, so that's completion, uh, early April for the project itself. Uh, the next project is FM 490 from, uh, FM 88 to, uh, 1015. Contractor is currently working at the intersections, uh, both intersections, 88 and, and 1015 at the same time. Um, we completed the half of the intersections, and by next month, they should be done with, uh, the other halves. And then, um, in March, early March, they're gonna start with the actual segment from 88 to 1015. They're gonna start on the westbound, uh, proceeding to the, to the eastbound. And, uh, we are currently at 25% complete, and the estimation, the estimated completion date is August of 2025. Do you have any questions or comments?
Just, just, just a couple that, that I have noticed, uh, some informational or some call from constituents. I noticed a little bit more activity on FM 1018 as far as, I talked to Tim about on their counters, I guess traffic counters. Do you know any about that, or is that another department that may put those out?
Yeah, it usually is the district office, knows them directly without, you know, getting through somebody's office. Uh, as far as actual work from the project, we are still going back to do, uh, some drainage, uh, I guess, close ID reshaped on Santa Monica area.
That's still a bonus question.
Yeah, so that's still on the.
It's still on the, on the.
Yes, that we, we haven't closed the project, and that's, uh, we're waiting on the contractor on that. And there's also another one driveway, uh, by one of the irrigation districts crossings that we're also gonna be going back and, and fixed. So those two items are still on the.
Well, I wanna, I wanna jump on before everybody else does, but I appreciate it. We finally got hold of millions on 1425.
That's good.
And we're diligently moving them now. It's, 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 it's a lot. I think you said 3,000 in your feet.
Happy to hear that.
Millions. So we're, we're moving them, and I think you started today too.
I started, I started today. We started today, and, um, now I know it took quite a bit to get them.
Yeah.
Maybe we can not take so long, that way it's not so dried out. Once we mix it, it'll be, it'll be.
Yeah, we're, we're digging in the middle of it. It's, it's a lot better.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
You.
Save the best for the last.
Yeah.
Yeah, you did communicate with, uh.
I did, compared with Gilbert and, and Victor yesterday.
No, I want to go to Sean.
But he met me up.
We were speaking that before.
Just roughly about, depends on the viewing, a belly dump or a, a dump truck. A dump truck would be about 75 loads per.
Yeah, it's about 75 loads, pretty soon. It is, it's quite a bit, quite a bit of product, but it, uh, it's a Precinct 4, or 7. Right on our range.
Happy, happy to hear that, and, uh, happy new year to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, and then we have, uh, line item number 10, approval of bond and payment for, uh, elected officials. I think we do this, uh, every, every year. Commissioners, as you know, there's, uh, there's, uh, bonds to be enforced for elected officials. And I think we, let's see what we have as a, I guess, we, uh, just approved. So move to approve it.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner De La Paz, second by Commissioner Tejeraina. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Line item number 11, uh, approval of oath for elected officials and staff. Action required, and Commissioners, as you know, uh, the, um, county clerk files these oaths. I, uh, wanna say that, um, I know that eyewitness most of the swearing-in and some took place. I know Sheriff, you had, you had yours early on, Ramoni, along with, uh, Constable, I think, Darkside and so forth. And I think, uh, Constable Tejeraina had his, um, at a church around Munich. And so I think they've all been filed and taken care of. So when you hear.
So move to approve that. Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tejeraina, second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Line item number 12, discussion action to approve a monthly distribution program project for calendar year 2025 by food bank out of Rio Grande Valley to be held on the last Tuesday of every month with the exception of holidays scheduled. Action required. I know this is your permission.
Yes, Judge and Commissioners, uh, this is a program that we entered upon to assist, uh, the food bank back in September. So we've done it a little over four times, four months now, and they're working real well. And what I wanted to do is just enter it by calendar year, the request. It's gonna be every, uh, last Tuesday of the month. And then, of course, 'cause we have two things to do, then we gotta enter it in the GUP form, 'cause we're utilizing Sebastian Community Center. So we can do it, do it like this. Uh, the only difference from being in, um, Thanksgiving, it kind of throws off the dates, but it'll be on either, normally Tuesday before Thanksgiving, and then the, uh, the Tuesday before, or the Thursday before Christmas. But it's been working real good. We're getting a big turnout, and we've covered Precinct 4 and Sebastian's up in that area. Ramenville has one in the, in the Precinct 7, and I think they have one in, um, San Flix Park. They have one in the.
San Pravita.
San Pravita, Messiah. Yes, sir. We're just the ones using the community center. So I, so I'm moved to approve that.
Second.
If I can get clarification, and the motion is to approve the use of the Sebastian Community Center? If you can include that in the.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, the motion is to, uh, approve the use of Sebastian Community Center for the, uh, distribution, uh, program project for calendar year 2025 for the food bank of the RGV to be held the last Tuesday of every month. Of course, for the exception of, of, of the holidays, it may change.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia.
Second. Amendment, second.
And a second by, uh, a motion and amended, uh, second by, uh, Commissioner Tejeraina. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, line item number 13, discussion action to approve 3, Commissioner, for the Willis County Emergency Services, action required. And Commissioner, as you know, we, uh, we appoint members to this board, and we typically go with, um, recommendations. For the most part, uh, board members that, uh, or, that, or commissioners, I think they're referred to, uh, that wanna continue to serve, we typically, uh, go by the recommendation of the executive director. Uh, and, and we, uh, we, uh, are also, there's a letter there from, from, uh, Mr. Edward Gonzalez, which is the president. And where, as you can see, there, there'll be some vacancies, and their, their recommendation is, uh, one of which I'm, I'm gonna, uh, abstain. And, and you'll see as, as, as I read out, uh, that for one of the positions is Medelia Biguerra, President of La Sara, Willis County, Texas, has expressed an interest in being appointed to serve on this board. I had disclosed a letter of interest submitted by Ms. Guerra, and then, uh, the board directors of Willis County Emergency Service District would like to recommend Ms. Susan A. Guerra and Ms. Maria and Medelia Cabazos, uh, to be considered for appointment as well. And I'll, I'll, I'll read the, the top of the letter so that we can know how we get to this point.
And Judge, if, if I can, oh, are you going to be abstaining from the discussion and the vote?
Uh, yes. I just wanna read the, uh, the letter that was sent.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, as you know, the terms of office of Susan A. Guerra, Maria and Medelia Cabazos and Maria Elba Sines as Commissioners of Willis County Emergency District, of Willis County, Texas, expired in midnight, December 31st of 2024, leaving three vacancies. I wish to remind you that three members should be appointed by the court to take effect January 1st, 2025 for a period of two years, same ending December 31st of 2026. Uh, both Ms. Susan Guerra and Medelia Cabazos are willing and able, and able to continue serving as Commissioners of Willis County Emergency Service District. However, due to the personal reasons, Maria Elba Sines resigned her position earlier this year. And, uh, I, I do, before I, uh, stop in the discussion, uh, alluding to what Ms. Inozan brought up, I, I do want to, uh, personally thank, uh, Ms. uh, uh, Cabazos for, uh, her service to the, uh, Emergency District. And with that, uh, I'll turn it over to, to Commissioner, uh, De La Paz for, uh, consideration. So, uh.
If you all will allow me to approach the bench, just in case you have any questions. Um, Helen Havas, yes, I'm the executive director for the Willis County Emergency Service District, and these are, uh, two-year terms, and we, it is a five-member board, and they are appointed by the Commissioners Court. Presently, we have Edward Gonzalez, kinda, what we're trying to establish here is to geographically cover all of Willis, Willis County with a representative. So Edward Gonzalez is the chair at the present time, and he, um, resides in Ramenville. And then we have Connie, uh, Juanita Padillo, who kinda covers, uh, lives in Lyford. So the three members that we're trying to, um, get appointed and reappointed would be Maria and Medelia Cabazos. She resides in, in San Pravita. And Susan Guerra resides in, like, the entrance of Sebastian. So we've never, um, I've been on, kinda, employed by this board since 1988, and we've never had a representative from La Sara. So we're really excited to, um, have some, an interest from Mrs. Guerra to be, um, serving on this board. So that is why the board recommended, um, Mrs. Guerra's appointment. So if, subject to the approval, um, by the Commissioners Court, if the three members are appointed, we would geographically cover all of Willis County on this board.
I'm gonna, uh, make a motion to approve, uh, Susan A. Guerra, uh, Ms. Maria and Medelia Cabazos, and Ms. Delia B. Guerra to be added to the Willis County Emergency Service District.
I second.
We have, we have a motion and we have a second. Any questions?
So we, we've named all the, uh, all the board members, and that was one of, one of the things I wanted to ask. Uh, and I very much applaud your efforts to, to get them throughout the, throughout the county. And, and I think that's a great idea. You got a great, a great board going forward. But I did have one of my constituents that had asked, uh, and actually, this, this, uh, this, this, the other is actually one of my constituents also in the Sebastian area. But I had one in Precinct 7 that asked, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and ask her to go ahead and, and submit, you know, for future consideration to, uh, you know, her interest in that. But I very much applaud this and I very much favor it.
Uh, any other discussion?
We're good.
Then, uh, we have a motion and we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone? Anyone opposed? Uh, we do have one abstaining, uh, Judge Guerra. Uh, anyone opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. For your all service, Karen.
We go to line item number 14. Discussion action to approve contracts in Willis County in the city of Ramville, uh, Texas, uh, by authority of Sector 31.092, effective election code for the contact supervision of the city winner election to be held on May 3rd of 2025. Commissioner, I was, uh, handed over a, a contract that the new, uh, city manager brought to me having to do with us running the election house, meaning the election, uh, department, uh, election administrator. And I, in all honesty, just submitted that, a document to, uh, Ms. Christina. I don't anticipate there'll be any issues. I, I know she was gonna take it over to you, Ms. Inozan, but that was this morning. I don't know if she did or not. Nevertheless, I think we can approve this upon, uh, legal review on, on the contract. Uh, we've, we've done it before, and I think, uh, that it's beneficial for the county to have, to run local elections as many as we can to be able to sustain that.
And Judge, uh, so is this similar to what I believe is already done in, uh, Lyford, uh, as well? So the, um, elections office handles the city elections in Lyford.
So with, with that, can, can I entertain a motion to, to approve upon, contingent upon legal review?
Second.
Got that, Lizzy? I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner Tejada.
Do you have a question along the lines of your question earlier? Is there, is there a fee for that? Is there?
Yes, yes.
To be in charge?
They do pay a fee, and it's typically outlined in the contract on how much it's going to get, we're going to pay for it.
It's ten percent.
Oh, it's on there?
Yeah, there's under general conditions.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't look at that. Gotcha. I didn't look at this report yet. That's fine.
So I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, Tejada, probably saying aye.
Aye.
And I'll oppose same sign, motion carries. Line number fifteen, discussion action in regards to request for authorization for the Willissey County Sheriff's Office to apply for the state homeland security grant program, regular project SHSP dash R, federal fiscal year twenty twenty-five, no match grant, action required.
Good warning again, Commissioners. This one... This one again is the Operation Stone Garden, and so it's a continuation that we've had for many years, even before my administration, where, of course, it covers some equipment and overtime pay for deputies and dispatchers.
Is this basically just a renewal?
Yes, sir.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tejada, second by Commissioner Garcia.
Just a quick question, this is the Stone Garden one?
You know what, excuse me, I'm sorry, I got it mixed up, that's actually the other one.
Hold on.
Yes, sir. So this one, we are pursuing an equipment grant, we're still kind of getting other, other things in order, as far as what we are going to be applying for, but it is all for law enforcement purposes.
Is this for equipment?
Yes, sir.
No match?
No match on this one.
Sheriff, the, the intention is, and I know this one's no match, typically we're good with that, but the intention is for, once you do get selected, you come back for us to accept?
Yes, sir.
I have a motion and a second.
Judge, if, if I can, there's, there's usually a resolution that's required, is one going to be required on this one, so you would need to include that in your motion to also approve the resolution. I don't know if there is one.
Amended, motion, got that, Lizzy?
To approve.
So include resolution if required.
Include required.
I amend my second. Motion and amended second. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'll oppose same sign, motion carries. Line number sixteen, discussion action in regards to request authorization for Willissey County Sheriff's Office to apply for the criminal justice grant programs, twenty twenty-six, twenty percent match grant, action required.
Again, Judge, this is going to be another equipment grant to the Justice Assistance. As you know, we had applied last year for a lot of these same grants, we were trying to secure funding for communications, our radio issue, and so they were just not funded, and so this year, we're pursuing different equipment that we could potentially utilize and, and obtain through this funding. That one does come with a twenty percent match. You know, it is based on if we actually get selected for the funding, so it's just an opportunity to apply for, for this funding.
Move to approve. One second.
I would ask you to include approving a resolution if needed on any of the ones that are grants.
Ms. Lizzy, I amend my motion to, to include any resolutions that may be needed. I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia, and... Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'll oppose same sign, motion carries. Line number seventeen, discussion in regards to request authorization for Willissey County Sheriff's Office to apply for General Victim Assistant Grant Program, twenty twenty-six, twenty percent match grant, continuation grant, action required.
As you know, Ms. Montes was recently resigned, she is pursuing her nursing degree, she's gonna go and finish up and get her RN, she's currently an LBN, so that's the main reason why she decided to go that route. But this is a, a, a position that has been very, very useful to the Sheriff's Office and, and throughout, throughout our communities, and so we are pursuing this grant again, of course, to get it funded for October one, or after October one of this year.
So I want to approve that. Okay, to approve that. Include the resolution if required.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tejada, second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'll oppose same sign, motion carries. Line number eighteen, discussion action in regards to request authorization for the Willissey County Sheriff's Office to apply for the General Victim Assistance Grant Program, twenty twenty-six, crime victim via non-investigated, twenty percent match grant.
On this one, we actually found a different funding source, so I would ask the Commission to disregard this, this agenda item. We will post back on, on the agenda on the next one. We did locate, again, a different funding source through the Attorney General's Office, and so we will pursue it through there.
Make the motion, will you table? I have a motion by Commissioner Tejada, eighteen, to table line item eighteen, can I, data second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'll oppose same sign. Line number nineteen, approve resolution authorizing the Willissey County Sheriff's Office to conduct enhanced patrol through the OPSG Texas Willissey twenty twenty-four performance period, March one, twenty twenty-five through February twenty eighth of twenty twenty-six, program to accept the award resolution attached, grant number thirty-one nine thirty-five ten, action required.
Again, this is actually the Operation Stone Garden, which covers our overtime for deputies and dispatchers, as well as some, some funding for equipment. You know, we, we have been utilizing this grant, the previous administration also utilized it, it's been very helpful to our county and our employees.
So basically, Commissioner, we're just, in a sense, continuing to, to approve, applying and utilizing this particular grant.
This one, Judge, I believe it's already been funded, it's to, or it's, it's to accept the award, is it correct, Judge? Yeah, it's to accept the award.
Move to approve. I have a motion by Commissioner Tejada, and a second by Commissioner Garcia.
I do have a question. Sheriff, first by memory, on, on this, this particular grant, are these, is this the one that was historically, or had in the past been shared with some of the other law enforcement agents?
Yes.
Is anybody attaching with this one?
I believe Raymondville PD.
Well, there's only one other one, right?
Well, Port PD is not, Lyford PD isn't either. So...
So Raymondville PD?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'll oppose same sign, motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Sheriff.
I'm sorry, and before the Sheriff speaks, I just wanted to, I guess, remind them, if all these grants that have matching, if you can come to us during budget workshops, so we can include it, if it is going to be accepted by then, or if it's, if you already know you got approved, so we can include it in the budget, because I don't automatically include grants, especially if they're new ones, right? I don't automatically include them, so that way the court can know if we have funding to budget and include the twenty percents. All right, thank you.
Line number twenty, discussion in regards to consider approving a phone landline for the Indigent Defense Coordinator Office, action required. Commissioners, what this has to do with, this is the new position that we approved through our budget, and also with different, we did the hiring, and we're, we're now at the stage where he's asking for a landline. How do we typically approve, and then we're able to tap into the permanent monthly expenses?
On this one, Judge, if it's a landline, we would have to, because it's a grant amidst the twenty and eighty, we'd just have to come back with a budget amendment to find funding for it, because I don't believe we have communication in that, in that side of the budget of the court, County Court. So you can approve the landline, and then you can come back and review, if you're in agreement, right?
Right, and, and I want to say that, I haven't read that grant authority, but I do not think that it includes the landline. Do you think it does?
I think it had communication, but we would have to get clarification if it's allowable, because it could mean, you know, this is a cell phone, I'm not sure, we would have to look into the details, or have the department check for the staff that's in it, follow up with the grant, to make sure that, you know, it's an allowable expense, and if it isn't, then we probably would have to find funding under that.
Let me, let me ask you this. Do you know we provided, Mr. Luisa, if you'd listen?
Uh, yes, I see. A cell phone?
Yes, a county cell phone.
Yes, the court had already, he came back, or they came back, and they requested a cell phone, so they currently have one.
Good, because in my mind, I'm thinking, we're already asking defendants to make contact with him. So, oh, I want to make sure that it's the county's.
Yes.
Okay, so then this will be in lieu?
I wasn't aware that they're requesting a landline, but yeah.
For addition, in addition to...
So, I mean, we're all for one system, just talking about another line, right? I mean, really, they charge per number?
Yes.
Yeah. And, and we didn't know where they were going to wind up, you know, anyway, so we couldn't, we couldn't approve it earlier.
Judge, and this isn't one, like, where, where we have a line that's not being utilized?
So I was wondering, there are other lines that are not being...
You know, that's, that's a good deal.
Probably are, probably so.
Cassie? Do, do we know who, that's right, because I know they have these guidelines, this would be VTX, right?
Yes, it would be VTX.
And who, who's able to do that?
I am.
Okay, so let's look to see if there's an existing line that would not be utilized, and just have that number be allocated to them.
Okay.
And, and just so everybody knows, the, the office is across the hall from Robert, the county inspector, that's the office, and I'll hopefully be working on these, these ones, and close.
Judge, just to have, verify for clarification, so when we get that charge, if there is, you know, an extra charge, would we be allocating it to, I guess, you and I can see whether where it's going to come from?
For the budget.
And after clarifying whether it's allowed as well?
See, which, which Commissioner's Precinct? Four?
So Judge, you all would still be deliberate, or discussing whether or not to approve a, a phone line, and then work out the funding part of it outside of that, once it's approved?
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, at, at this point, what I would recommend is for us to move forward into looking, to see how we could provide a line. If that's what they're requesting, certainly want that, that position to be as successful and as quickly as possible.
Move to approve, whoever is taking it.
A motion by Commissioner Garcia.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Tejada. We'll, we'll, we'll bring it back.
Yes. Judge, I'm sorry for interrupting, but just want to get clarification on, on another line item, if, if it wasn't said, because your staff was kind enough to include my bond on the other line item number...
Okay, well, let, let me finish this one, if you can take a look.
Okay.
Okay, so any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'll oppose same sign, motion carries. Okay, so it's... Is that a list?
No, there's only this, I can read them out if you need.
I don't really know her question, I guess it's whether or not it includes, we need to go back to the line item?
Here, we just be going back to line item number ten, Judge, to clarify that the bond and payment includes staff, not just elected officials?
Oh, I see, no, same. It, it does include for elected officials?
Yes.
Which you have one of?
Yes, appointed, so, and I wrote, well, District Clerk is gonna bring back my oath and my, my statement of officer, that the district judge approved for another two years, and the next thing is just that they have included the bond part in this one.
Okay, well, let, let's go back, and let's go, let's open it up again.
Okay, appreciate it.
Okay, so line number ten, approve of bond and payment for elected officials, action required. So I guess, trying to see what motion we could put that would cover everybody, not only you, but also staff, as it does on the next one. Can we say that we approve, approve of bond and payment for elected officials and employees whose bond is included and budgeted? Is it, is it budgeted?
I would just say it's required by state law, if you just include that, because even if it's not budgeted, and we're required to do it, then we have to do it anyway, and we have to figure it out.
That's required by state law.
Yeah.
Okay, so who did the motion?
De La Paz and Tejada.
So the motion would be amended to include elected officials and employees who are required to have a bond by law. Is it so amended?
I'll amend my motion to...
I think she got it already, so if you say amended, then she's already got it.
So I'm in my second.
You got that, Lizzy?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I have an amended motion and amended second. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'll oppose same sign, motion carries. Thank you.
Judge, I, I do need to ask to come back to line item thirteen as well, the discussion in action on appointment of three Commissioners to the Willissey County Emergency Services District. I just want to clarify that both you abstained on the vote, as well as Commissioner Tejada, since there was a family member on the, on, on the panel for both of you.
Okay.
And if, we can just clarify and get that re-vote again on that one, and just to make sure we clarify the abstaining. Usually, when we abstain, I prefer to get like a, when one abstains, we can make sure that we list everybody who voted and everybody who abstained, so if you could do like a roll call on that one, and then that way they can say yea, nay, or abstain. On line number thirteen.
I put there who voted a and who voted n.
Right, but I wanted clarified on who, on, on who voted yea, nay, or abstain, especially when we have one where they abstained, just to put it on the record. If we could just, like, whoever may...
Okay. So we want to go down the line?
Right, we just go down the line with, starting with the county judge, and then going forward with Precinct one, two, three.
Then, okay, let me bring, let me bring the line item back up. Commissioners, we go to line number thirteen, discussion action to appoint three, Commissioners... Uh, Commissioners of Willis County Emergency, uh, Services District, action required.
And Judge, the only thing I would ask is that, uh, there'd be kind of like when we do the tax, uh, where we ask for individual, if we can just get that count on, uh, per, per, uh, city member. And so, uh, Lizzy could ask, uh, for the vote on how that was.
Poll.
The poll, right.
Okay, easy.
Kind of like we do the quorum, you could just ask each one how, how, how they voted.
Okay, fir- first of all, who made the motion and second?
Um, De La Paz and Alanis.
Good, yes.
So that stays the same and it would just be, uh, uh, since, uh, Judge, you're asking Commissioner De La Paz to, to take care of this agenda item. Uh, you would just need to direct Lizzy to ask each, each member how they vote.
Will you, ma'am, will you, uh, please ask each member how they vote?
Yes, sir. Commissioner precinct one, do you vote for or against?
For.
Commissioner precinct two, do you vote for or against?
I abstain.
Commissioner precinct three, do you vote for or against?
For.
Commissioner precinct four, do you vote for or against?
For.
County judge, do you vote for or against?
I abstain.
So then the record vote?
Motion carries.
And the record vote was three?
Eight or two.
And two abstaining?
Two abstaining.
Thank you. I just wanted to get that clarified.
Motion passing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we go to, number twenty-one, approve of monthly reports.
Judge, who to approve the monthly reports?
Uh, I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia to approve. Monthly reports is submitted. Can I obtain a second? I'll second, second by Commissioner De La Paz. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Alright.
And I'll oppose, same sign, motion carries. Line item number twenty-two, approve of travel requests. Kathy, do you have any?
Yes, I have one. Travel request for precinct one, Commissioner De La Paz, and Lisa North, removing elected county deputy commissioners in college state practices on January thirteenth through seventeen twenty twenty-five.
Judge, Judge, I just wanted to clarify on this one, on the hotel. She did get a recommendation for the combat reserve, but, uh, however, at the time, because of the timing, it was booked, or it was full, so we're gonna update the requisition to include the new hotel that she got under the combat, just to, um, clarify and transparency. May I all approve it?
No, you're.
Thank you.
Can I obtain a motion to approve travel request?
Look to approve, second.
Yeah, motion by Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner Tejada. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Alright.
And I'll oppose, same sign, motion carries. Line item number twenty-three, approve of treasures report. Everybody?
Good morning, everybody.
Are there any questions on the report that is on your screen?
Ah, interest rates.
Yep.
Great.
And you can see that they've been slowly coming down.
Yeah. Yeah.
Where, where, where's that located?
It's on page three. It shows the interest rate for the bank and for the two investment pools that we have.
So this is not the new guys?
No, those are locked into CDs, so those rates don't, uh, fluctuate like monthly, but these do. I, actually, I didn't include that page with these CDs.
No, I didn't. And, and Mr. Ruben, on the, uh, self-insurance, uh, I know that we, uh, reallocated, uh, monies to an in- interest-bearing account, right? So, in other words, ninety-one is not the balance in that funding?
No. No, it's, uh, a total if you add up the ninety-one and then on the next page, there's an additional six hundred and ninety-three thousand. And then there's also the five hundred thousand CD that matures every six months.
Alright, good. Is, is there anything that, that catches your eyes as far as trends or what have you?
No, sir.
Other than the, the interest that you mentioned, they are going down in general?
Yeah, that's the only thing that I, I watch daily is the interest rates when they change. If the market announces something drastic.
Uh, is there any comments or questions? If not, can I obtain a motion to approve?
Look to approve.
Uh, motion by Commissioner Garcia. Approve treasury report. Second by Commissioner De La Paz. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Alright.
And I'll oppose, same sign, motion carries. Line item number twenty-four, approve of, uh, treasures quarterly report. Look to approve. Motion by Commissioner De La Paz. To approve, second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Alright.
And I'll oppose, same sign, motion carries.
Judge, you have a little, little discussion, uh.
Yes, sir.
Had nothing to do with this, but I, I wanna thank your efforts, uh, with the treasure yesterday and, and the auditor expediting the data that I only do when you two got.
I, uh, Reiner came yesterday for the check.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
The other two came this morning.
Alright. Line item number twenty-five, approve of budget amendments.
I was gonna ask, I didn't receive anything, so maybe we can move it to the next, uh, meeting if, if it, if it comes up.
Okay.
Because nobody's making.
So I guess table it, it'll be in order.
Yes, sir.
So, so with the table, item line item number twenty-five? Second by Commissioner Tejada. Second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Alright.
And I'll oppose, same sign, motion carries. Line item number twenty-six, approve of text collector's report. Let's see. There's something, uh, as you know, Commissioner, um. I guess December and January are the busiest for the text collector. I don't see one. Do you guys see one? Uh, Judge, could I please? Something here? Is it?
Yeah. It's kind of sideways.
As long as it's there.
Yeah, it's here. Twenty-six.
Well, good, good thing I have, uh, the old faithful here. Okay, let's see. So we're, we're, we're down, uh, three hundred thousand from last year at this time. Some of that might have to do with, um, the, uh, with the, um, tax, the revenue income. But I'll, I'll get with her if it's, that is it. Lizzy, you, you came in right on time. We're, we're on a.
Sorry, I tried to hear.
Text collector reporting, uh, we're, we're just, uh, noticing that, uh, uh, up to December, uh, I guess at the end of the month, right, uh, we're down like three hundred thousand from last year.
We didn't get CoreLogic files till this month, so it's gonna bounce out for this month.
Okay.
So then those are the positive checks. So it's like a million, something in the collections.
Okay.
Oh, so that's actually just good.
Nothing to worry about.
Yes, nothing to worry about. We'll be getting a million ones too, so, yeah.
I'm glad that you, uh, that you came in, uh, at the right time to, to. You're working. Commissioner, since we have Lizzy here, is there any questions that you might have pertaining to the, the report? And I was just, uh, explaining to her before you walked in, but, uh, uh, I guess January is the busiest.
Yes, Jan- January is usually our busiest month. We're at least trying to pay people penalties and interest.
Right, and then, uh, October through December, there's incentives, right? For people to pay.
Well, actually, there, we don't give a discount, no.
Okay.
Um, as far as I've been there, we don't give a discount when anybody pays.
Very.
Yeah, but I know in, in November, they have the option to do the half payment.
Oh, that's what it is.
It's just in November, yeah.
Okay, I got you.
And, uh, over sixty-five can pay till January when they set up the quarterly.
Alright. I have a motion by Commissioner Tejada to approve text collector's report.
Okay.
And second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Alright.
And I'll oppose, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Line item number twenty-seven, review of special claims. So there, there's no more? Just for information purposes?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, so nothing out of the ordinary, auditor?
No, sir. These are our preferred, uh, expenses that y'all decide before the fiscal year starts that we go ahead and pay out, so. Utilities, uh, the usual, uh, payments that we do.
Alright, so there's no action to be taken there. We go, is there any comments or question? If not, we'll go to line item number twenty-eight, review monthly reports of jail count. On that one, Commissioner.
I see, I see seventy-eight. Which is a good number, but then there's federal inmates, which is great, we have eight. And then, of course, you have the three, but, but typically the three, or however many you're on ICE hold, they're, they're included on seventy-eight. So I'm assuming this is gonna be a total of seventy-eight, so it should be seventy-ten. Uh, and then eight, does that make sense, Ms. Yon?
It, it does, although I do not know if the inmates seventy-eight includes the federal or not. So the breakdown is, I do know that the ICE detainees is included in the total count. I just don't know if the federal inmates is, is separate from, from that.
If you follow, shoot, it, it is, we don't know.
Right.
Yeah. I, I did ask the sheriff, not in this particular report, but in the previous one, and he told me that it was.
Okay.
That it was included in the overall count.
So that's seventy-eight total, that's a good, good count. Eight, uh, a total of eight, uh, federal inmates involving, uh, especially means one cell, so there's one cell, only one taken.
And, and just, just so that, so this is supposed to be a monthly report on the jail count, but it's a report of one day. So I don't know if you're wanting the monthly report from, like, on a day-to-day or just on that day.
Well, he sends out, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, I don't know if it's weekly, is it weekly? Just to sell the ships. But what I'm saying is that they don't send it just monthly. But I, but I'm not sure if it's weekly or bi-weekly, but I, I know I, I get it more often than once a month. I know that for sure. I wanna say it's weekly.
Oh, you're talking about the inmate list, the.
Yes, what, what are we talking about?
Well, right, um, so that one will, it just, I think I usually get that once a week.
Yeah, once a week, right?
Sometimes every two weeks, it just depends on, on if, if they have other things going on because of the trip to court. You know, it's just hard for, for that to get.
Is it B and G, daily or?
I, I know that, that there's reports that have to get turned into the state on daily jail counts, and so, I don't know. And that's the only reason why I was saying was because this reflects on a monthly report, but we're getting a daily report. And I do know that that was a question that was raised on the. The meal, the meal agreement, and it just, it's so that the auditor has that kind of running, I would say tally, or so.
Well, they're sending you.
There's any news like daily, so now I'm getting them barded with emails for the jail count, which is, I mean, I'll go back to them and when we have to compare the envoys, but there was one that they did send for, and I, I don't remember if it was for the whole week, like you said, Judge, or, uh, it had to have been for a weekly because the month hadn't even finished when I got that email. Um, but that's just to me, and I don't know if, um, I need to follow up if they've been consistent in sending it like every week, or if it's something that is, uh, like you said, it could be every two weeks, I don't know, I need to verify.
Yeah.
But what Ms. Yon also is saying, if they're submitting for monthly, maybe they should submit that report to this court because they'll show you the whole month, or they'll show you all the weeks.
Well, if this was something that you all had requested, and that's why I'm just bringing it to your attention, do you want a, a monthly breakdown? Or do you just want this, which is a date, like for that day?
Yeah, it's, uh, it's basically every two weeks, every time before court, they'll send it. So they must just send it on the sixth, right? So they'll send it twice a month, this, you're right, it's, it's just kind of a picture. But if you want an average daily population report, which does exist, that's an even more complicated formula that tells you. But if you want an average daily population report, which does exist, that's an even more complicated formula that tells you your average daily. Now, but this is, paint's a pretty good picture.
Yeah, to, to me, that's sufficient for us to know where we're at. But I know that when we had the discussion of the meal, there was a reason behind you
Right.
being copied on the number of meals daily.
Right, because once we get our first invoice, I'm gonna compare it to all those days.
The daily meals, right. Because this is a total of seventy-eight, let's just say for this day.
Yeah.
And this is just a snapshot, like you said.
Yeah, snapshot. On, on January sixth, so there's no reason to have a hundred meals at a minute. You know what I'm saying?
Right, yes. I'm just gonna ask them to change the agenda item then, just to says re- review report on jail count instead of a monthly report. Because it just sounds like it, we're, we're trying to look at what the whole month's daily one was, and this is really just to review, you know, just the, the jail. Okay.
Okay. So, any, any comments? And no, just a review. There's no comments and questions, then we move over, we move on to line number twenty-nine, review of monthly employee overtime report. On, on that one, Commissioner, I, I, I have not, uh, uh, broken down, uh, overtime as I have done in the past when we were, um, really concerned. And not that we shouldn't be concerned now, but I think, uh, there's enough time that has elapsed already since October one for me to, to see what the trend we're having, having to do with, uh, with overtime and see we can target maybe where we're gonna wind up. If, if, if it's, uh, heading the wrong direction, obviously, we need to have, uh, uh, discussions with, with the sheriff and see how we can, uh, change that. Uh, I'm optimistic, uh, I think just by the mere fact that we're no longer going to get the meals daily that should have helped. Having said that, that just happened not too long ago, so we'll, we'll...
We should even see a downward trend.
A downward trend, I agree. And I think that the sheriff agreed with us when you brought that up, uh, as such. So it should be good.
Still fairly few large ones looking good.
So as far as, uh, yeah, people putting in overtime?
Yeah, but it's a lot more limited than it was.
So, uh, if there's no more comments or questions on the overtime, we go to line number thirty. Executive session conferred with Commissioner Cordial Council regarding pending counterplay litigation and our negotiations on the county's employer's interest pursuant to WTCA down code section five oh one point oh seven one, A and two, and B, generation of rights pending, uh, our counterplay litigation negotiations on the county's employer's interest pursuant to WTCA down code section five oh one point oh seven one, A and two, uh, I think we might need to go into executive session, Commissioner.
Yes, sir.
On that, there's several things that, um, we need to, uh, deliberate on. So with that, can I entertain a motion to go into, uh, executive session?
Sure.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you.
Second by Commissioner, take a minute.
Great.
It is eleven-ten, and we are going into executive session.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Zamorano. Let me just clear that. Zamorano. Okay, by Commissioner Zamorano.
Judge, if we can note that Commissioner De La Paz stepped out at 12:14.
Yes, Commissioner De La Paz stepped out and so...
And will be coming at 12:16?
At 12:16, yes. And so on executive session line item number 31, action related to executive session A possible action and B possible action, can I entertain a motion to take no action?
Both make motion, they will take no action on both.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tejada, second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Can I entertain a motion to adjourn?
No move to adjourn.
Do we need to note again that Commissioner De La Paz has stepped back in?
Yes, Commissioner De La Paz is out back in. I don't have a motion on the floor, can I entertain a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Zamorano. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries.